Monday, April 12th, 2021, Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting, 7:00 PM. First is seating, and let's see, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So we have the one opening for Alex. So I'm going to see Tom Hastings there for Alex. Okay, with your time? I'll take that as a yes. Okay.
Yes.
All right, great. Moving on to the approval of the March 8th, 2021 Regular Minutes. Any issues with the minutes from our last meeting?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept from Richard.
Janet will second.
Janet Bellamy seconds. All those in favor?
Hi.
All those opposed? Extentions?
Yeah, abstain. Wasn't at the last meeting?
Okay, that's Tom Hastings.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm gonna have to abstain also for the same reason.
And Jeff Schellinger. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to public comment, and we have a couple of public here. Anything from public comment?
This is Tony Garin from BNT Garin. Just plugging in for information as in the past, and with all of the new state legislative changes to be contemplated in the Lake District, King, I'm just want to stay informed a little bit. Appreciate all your efforts.
Well, we thank you for that, and thank you for being involved. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Anything from Paul?
No, no, Dick, but I'll say hello just for you. I'm just gonna listen tonight. There's a lot of stuff in the legislative package, so it'll be interesting. Thank you.
Okay, and with Alex not here, I'm taking, I don't have any bills because he's not offering up any bills. So move on from public comment to bills, nothing there. Moving on to correspondence. One of the correspondence we received was a resolution from the Economic Development Committee, and has everyone had an opportunity to see that?
Oh, no.
No, that wasn't part of the packet. I just wanted to be clear. Okay, so I will read it into the record here. Resolution on Interstate 84 Interchange Special Planning Area, Ashford Economic Development Commission. Whereas there was a large plot of land approximately 130 acres on Ashford's northwestern border along I-84, composed of four parcels, approximately 97 acres in Ashford, adjacent to two parcels in Union, approximately 33 acres, all owned by the Ashford Realty Trust LLC. And whereas the Ashford Realty Trust LLC, often referred to in Ashford documents as the I-84 properties, has been identified as a primary area for Ashford commercial development, having been designated a special planning area in the 2005 and 2015 Ashford Plan of Conservation and Development under current zoning regulations. And whereas the vision for the Interstate 84 Interchange Special Planning Area, as stated in the 2015 POCD, is that the Interstate 84 interchange will provide needed diversity and surety in Ashford's tax base while growing economic opportunity by permitting the operation of a large-scale industrial of large-scale industrial businesses, as well as complementary commercial activities compatible with the rural character of the town. And whereas Article 4D, Section 3, Special Permit Uses in Article 4D, Section 4, Developmental Standards of the Ashford Zoning Regulations were developed in 2014 and do not provide for all the possible economic development opportunities that are available and more realistic in this post-pandemic economic climate. And whereas the town of Ashford could benefit from a growth in its grand list with the responsible development of the properties in the Interstate Interchange Development Zone, IID. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ashford EDC requests the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission to update the zoning regulations in the Interstate Interchange Development Zone to be consistent with the intent of the POCD and to provide greater options that will provide for both responsible and optimal development of this area relative to the current and future economic climate. Motion approved resolution. Motion to approve resolution by Margaret Chady, seconded by John Caloris, and adopted by unanimous vote of all present at the Ashford Economic Development Commission on March 24th, 2021.
Yeah, Jeff, this, I had asked Mike Gantik to be here tonight, but he did have some conflicts. He said he would try, but apparently he can't. The resolution was drafted by Mike at the request of the EDC. And I didn't want to put on two hats at once tonight, but I guess I'll have to. I am, for those that don't know, I'm also chairman of the Economic Development Commission. We had met with the Ashford Realty Trust at the meeting before we had passed this resolution and talked about what their plans were for that area and the issues that they had and what possibilities would be. As most of you will recall, I had made the motion not to make the changes that they had requested to our land use regulations several months ago in a special meeting because I didn't think it was appropriate to make changes to the regulations based upon a proposal that was not fleshed out. However, it's been our plan all along to update the land use regulations, not just for the residential agriculture, but also the Lake District, which we're working on, and also the I-84 interstate. So this is simply asking that the planning zoning initiate an overall update to those regulations in the sense of what we had already done in the residential agriculture. It's not to authorize any specific thing that Ashford Realty Trust wants to do, but simply make our regulations consistent with what other towns in the area are doing and with what the POCD talks about. So my sense is that we can work on this in parallel with what's going on with the Lake District, and I'm more than happy to take the lead similar to what I did for the residential agriculture to try to make this thing happen, and we'll do it with a full concurrence of the commission as we did for the residential agricultural section.
Thank you. Thank you, Dick. Um, so just to be clear, I just want to be sure, I believe that the follow-up to both the hearing and our action regarding the request of Ashford Realty Trust LLC to make those requested changes to our regs. I believe we said even though we voted not to act on those that request at this time, I believe we did say that we would move forward and take a look at these in due course with our other regs and the other items that we are working on. So I appreciate the input from the Ashford Economic Development Commission. Um, I, I guess I'm a little perplexed as to you know, I do see what the request is, but I think we were planning on doing that all along. I just.
It's just a matter of setting the priorities, and it's probably to make the motion, I would make the motion as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission that we begin examining the land use regulations for the I-84 interchange area and proceed on those in the similar fashion as we did to the residential agricultural. And I will take the lead on putting together a package, looking at surrounding towns.
Don't you think, you're kind of, you're kind of overstepping from what you said earlier with not wanting to wear two hats here? And now you're putting out a a motion on something that you are the head of the group. No, you didn't necessarily write this, I guess. I know obviously it's unanimous and you approved on it, but don't you think it's there's a bit of a conflict in there?
I don't think, so Jeff, we had planned on doing this anyhow. I'm simply stating that I would rather see the commission work on this sooner rather than later. There is, I believe there would be opportunities coming downstream over the next two, three, four months, and if we put this off for four, six months off to the future, I think that we could possibly miss some of those opportunities. And the only work that the commission is going to have to do is similar to what we did for the residential agriculture, and the commission didn't do a lot of work. It simply reviewed what I put together. And I'm proposing that I do the same thing on this. We've got the Lake District activity going forward, but that's not going to go forward real fast because we've got the survey that you had sent out to them. So you're gonna have to compile that, digest that before we do a lot of work on the Lake District. We've got the affordable housing that we'll be talking about in a bit. That can go forward in parallel. I'm simply saying that this should go forward sooner rather than later.
Can I make a comment?
Jeff, was that Jeff?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Jeff.
I guess I'm just having a little trouble understanding the sense of urgency here to move forward on this. I know that we had talked about revisiting some of this and talking about that area. It seems like there's a real, real hard push from the Economic Development Commission to I don't know, to me, it just seems like they want us in the real estate business, and I don't know if that's the right direction for this commission. I agree that we need to look at that and update, you know, the regulations there to better suit the times that we're in. But again, I don't see the sense of urgency.
Jerry, I'm sorry.
I, I'm not in a big hurry to do anything on that either.
Who was that?
I agree with Jeff.
That was Jerry DeFrane.
This is Janet. I'd just like to say, I, I think it's obvious that we need to address redo the regs for this area. Jeff had said that we would do it. And I think it's, it's going to be done in a timely manner. I'm not sure that we need to vote on anything.
Well, what I would propose is that I'll go forward instead of doing what I did for the residential agricultural area, and then I can present that to the commission when I've got it prepared. And it's not going to be done in a week or two. It'll be done in a month or so. The commission can then look at it and act upon it if they so choose. I just don't see putting this on the back burner at this point in time. That's, that's all. The purpose of the Economic Development Commission is to promote economic development in the town. And when the land use regulations do not reflect things that are in the plan of conservation development to propose those developments, it makes it difficult to do that. The parcel at I-84 has been vacant for decades. There have been, last time I tried to count, there were over six or eight different proposals that were tried and that never came to fruition. The most promising thing for that right now would be some sort of distribution setup. And if we look at what that would make as far as an impact to the town, it's pretty significant. I don't know if something would go in comparable to the FedEx facility, but the FedEx facility and the TA truck stop make up about 30% of the grand list of Wellington. So that would make a big impact upon the town and our tax base. So that's what's driving the Economic Development Commission. And frankly, we're not out marketing Ashford Realty Trust. We simply want to make the, we want to see the regulations reflect development that could take place there. There's no skin off of the most of the folks within the group here other than say, okay, Williams, go ahead and take your time like you've done in the past for every other regulation change we've made and put it forth for folks to look at.
I think what we have to remember here, and again, I appreciate the efforts of the Economic Development Commission trying to bring businesses and just that, economic development to Ashford. But if you look at the POCD, on every statement in there regarding the Interstate Exchange area and most of our areas, and as was testified to during our hearing, is there's a number of, there's a number of issues when it comes to that interstate area. Yeah, it's away from town. However, it is only one and a quarter miles away from the Lake Chaffee area. The people that we had testified were very concerned about the the headwaters and the watershed areas that it represented along Mount Hope, to the point where we actually had a water profile, the hydro profile that was provided to us from the Conservation Commission had Loretta Robel. I think we have to keep in mind that, you know, it needs, as stated in the POCD, it needs to meet the character and the the nature of the town, complementary, as it said, with the rural character of the town. And it's more than just, it's a business. It's a business in a very strategic enviro ecological area that is taking place. And we hear that, and you're going to hear that every single time this comes up for hearing.
Right, and if you look at the nature of things that would be built there, they would all require a special permit. And if you go back to the special permit of any large development, it would require a large payment to pay for consultant fees that would study such things as the environmental impact, the traffic impact, all of those items. So changes of the land use regulations are not going to relax anything associated with the environmental that is totally wrong. We have no environmental issues talked about in the residential agriculture or any of the other land use regulations. It simply talks to the things associated with general land use. The folks that came to that special public area, I would say 50% of the people there would like to see the entire area at I-84 remain as it is and never be developed, which it may be their interest, but that's not the interest of the town, since it is zoned as an industrial-commercial development area. But no one is, in the changing of the land use regulations, no one is going to propose to disregard the sensitivity of the area from environmental, watershed, wetlands, traffic, and all of the above. Those, those items are all there, and a number of the uses that are proposed there could provide a lot of impact. Most of you probably don't recall because you weren't on the commission at the time, but we had a trash sorting facility proposed for that area. And it was only because we were able to not approve a condemned road that that was shut down. So we could have a geothermal, a a, another anaerobic digester thing proposed there. There's a lot of things that could be proposed to that, other than what Ashford Realty Trust has has proposed in terms of a distribution warehouse. All I'm proposing is that we start looking at the land use regulations, not the environmental, not looking at the things that would be associated with a special permit because all of those items would have to be considered, and there would be public hearings and the like, all of those going forward.
Dick, the six to eight proposals that came through before, did those were, as I think you put it, were shot down or were not, did not come to fruition? Were those due to, was the obstacle based on the zoning regs? Or what happened with those?
Various reasons. The, the one for the trash sorting facility was shot down by a decision of the Board of Selectment not to grant. The parcel was not an Ashford Realty Trust parcel. It was a different parcel. It's closer to the highway. They wanted to condemn a road that cut the parcel in two so they could use the entire eight-acre area for the trash sorting facility. The Board of Selectment chose not to condemn that road, and that shot that one down. The others are ones that were tried to sell. They didn't come through. One was a water park that would have required a special permit. It wasn't specifically designated as a, as a use in the list of uses for the area, but the business didn't come through. There's been several truck stops proposed for that area. They haven't come through. There was also, you may, if you drive to Sturbridge, you'll see the RV park that's in the old automobile dealership that was proposed for the area, and the people that wanted to do that found the old auto dealership a better location than doing it in Ashford. So it's, it's been a long hoe for the folks that have owned the land there to try to develop it. All I'm proposing is that we go back, as we have done other land use regulations, revisit this, and then put forth what would be the changes to these regulations, and they would come in forth in front of the, of the commission in the normal course of action, as has everything else that we've done in the past with changes. And the workload for doing this comes upon me. I mean, unless someone else wants to step and do these things instead of me.
Well, I I don't see an issue with, as opposed to, as Janet said, you know, as opposed to taking a vote at action or anything, I don't see an issue if this is something that you wish to pull together and bring forward again, as you've done frequently in the past, and great appreciation of the board. If it's something you want to start to pull together and look at to get the wheels rolling on it, I'm, I'm not against it. I don't think anyone here would be against it. If there's anyone that does want to take the time to assist Dick on this and work with him on it, that's obviously fine. Mike, did you want to say something?
Yeah, so one suggestion, and I have had some involvement in this, so, you know, backing up. I originally asked Ashford Realty Trust to go to the Economic Development Commission. The reason for that is that I felt that part of the, a large chunk of the comments made during their application from all, from everyone, whether it be commission members or, or members of the public, some of them were rooted in sort of perhaps not quite understanding or keeping in mind the portion of the application that we were dealing with. At that point, it was simply a text amendment to facilitate some additional uses in the regs, and a lot of the discussion centered around development. And as Dick said, you know, he wasn't comfortable with not having a proposal. Well, from a planning perspective, we will never have a proposal if the regs we have do not facilitate the uses that the market says will happen there. So what I tried to do was have the owner go to EDC to basically make the business case of it's great that we want to promote farmers markets on the property and restaurants, but the market will never ask for that. So he tried, the goal was to make the business case that either he can try to change the regs, but he wants to work with the town. So he went to the EDC and we came back here. My personal feeling is that the best option for this area is actually not a standard traditional, what you'll call a Euclidean zone, but something more like a floating zone or special development district. The reason for that is that step one involves the submission of a concept plan which allows the applicant to demonstrate to the Planning and Zoning Commission the general concept of what they want to do. If the commission's in agreement, then they approve that application, and it lands the zone on the parcel. Then they come back for a special permit to show that they have, you know, zero runoff and zero light pollution and traffic is adequate. And so I think that that process would allay more of the concerns that we heard at the meeting. So my only suggestion to Dick would be that perhaps we look at the language, but maybe not the nuts and bolts of how we do it so we can consider if there's another approach to the zoning in this area that might be more that might make the commission feel like they have more control of the process in a sort of a step-by-step way.
And Mike, I've never said no to the floating zone concept, but at the same token, I do think there's a lot of, I've reviewed what's in there, and there's a lot of things we can do to simply update the language that's in the land use regulations. So we can, and I'll work with you to figure out how to incorporate the idea of a floating zone. But still, I think the permitted uses area needs to be looked at, and I think the coverage, you know, as a percentage of the, of the land size needs to be looked at. And there's a whole bunch of other items that are in there that do not necessarily make a lot of sense going forward. So we're not going to vote on those tonight, but all I'm saying at this point is that we take the time, which is my time, and I'll work with Mike, and we'll start looking at what might be the changes that we put forth in the formal land use regulations.
Okay. Unless anyone has any specific issue regarding Dick moving forward with putting together some preliminary information and working with Mike for, again, you know, the possibility of applying some different ideas such as the floating zone or whatever, it's, you know, go forth and prosper.
I absolutely dot on sitting down and working through multiple pages of word revisions and stuff.
All right. Okay, um, that, and again, please share with Mike and the rest of the Economic Development Commission. Thanking them for their input and for their again, partnership and working together to try and make Ashford a better place. Okay, moving on. Correspondence still. Email from a Butters to I-84 to 154 Westford Hill Road. I did receive this on March 17th. So I will share. This is from Brian Griffiths. Subject is 154 Westford Hill Road. I am sending the email below this email. I'm resending the email below this email. So there are two emails actually to share. Since the January 21st, 2021 email, there are other questions that we have. The latest court filing appears to give permission for Love to continue digging the soil and trucking it out with a new end date of September 2022. We'll discuss that issue later on in the unfinished business. First, the document submitted by Lowe's lawyer incorrectly states that there was a permit issued. That is a flawed document submitted to the court. Therefore, that should be corrected to read agricultural exemption. Did the town dispute the order? If not, why not? Since the document is flawed, that should be resubmitted with the correct language. The town should dispute the premise. It also appears that the value of the material has become an issue. Why should the town learn about the price of Love's Hardpan? And changed into a permit, Love should be subject to the stringent regulations that one would have to adhere to if honest about what one, what they were doing, such as processing Hardpan. So it appears that Judge Matthew Auger has given Love another year beyond what was initially agreed to. Is the judge aware that this is a residential area with a dozen homes within 1,100 feet of the processor and two of those homes within 600 feet? As we approach May of 2021, we are now entering the sixth year of what Love claimed he was going to do, dig the soil and trucking it out, six years. Since permission has been given to operate a gravel crusher 600 feet from our home and 1,100 feet from a dozen homes, measured by Google Earth, accurate within feet, we request a noise study be performed. Remember, all of this excavation is being performed to remove a hill for cows and goats, later amended to include the possibility of community dark garden and solar array. But as Love has stated in his agricultural plan of September 2018, due to my advancing age and declining mobility, I find it necessary to remove a hilly area. So is this a reason to move a hill to bring in cows and goats or to make a level field to accommodate Love's disability? Maybe that would be best addressed by the Americans with Disabilities Act, not by the commission. Is that a documented disability? That is why the commission has subjected our neighborhood to excavation and gravel processing noise since early 2017. What happened to the initial estimate? Uh, what happened to the initial estimate of 8,500 cubic yards of material? At one point, Love estimated he was about halfway to that estimate. Is the town not using that as a measure of progress as they had for years? This has been a questionable endeavor from the beginning at best. Statements such as he will hire someone to dig the soil and truck it out. And the area is wooded and part of the Bicknell Preserve, original exemption application, were documented and are questionable claims. Love hired someone to dig the soil, process it, move it around the property and finally truck it out. The area is a neighborhood of homes as well as being wooded. So from the very beginning, there are misstatements. This is a residential agricultural zoned area that you have essentially allowed a commercial operation to sell hardpan and probably other materials not yet mentioned for many years now. How many neighborhoods in Ashford are subject to such an operation? Please attempt to answer all of our questions in both emails in a timely manner, as well as give us an update to the current situation. We request that these emails be read aloud during the next meeting of the selectmen and planning and zoning. Uh, I'm going to go to the, uh, next email that was sent and, uh, there was, there's a miscommunication on it. I did reach out to him trying to find it and this is his response to me. Um, uh, it turns out I never sent the email. It was in my drafts. One question we have is what is the current estimate of material? And again, this original email was from January 21st. One question we have is what is the current estimate of material removed from the property? And in August 2018, he reported three eighths to one half the hill had been removed and remediation had commenced. That is about halfway to his initial estimate of 8,500 cubic yards. He has had over two years from that last report. What is the current estimate of removal and how is the rate of mediation progressing? How many acres has he remediated on his way to clear four to five acres? After reviewing the meeting minutes from December meeting, he wants to say that we would oppose any extension of the exemption. The meeting minutes indicated there is a discussion of an extension because of the coronavirus. Okay. So this is, this is kind of out of date because we read the earlier update that just went through. There are many days of activity in 2020. I have the dates, times of activity. Does not appear that excavation completely ceased because of the coronavirus. So to ask for an extension because of limited opportunity of work because of the coronavirus does not ring true. And that would be the end of it. Okay. So again, we do have, uh, 154 Westford Hill Road. If anyone wants me to refer back to this, uh, document for our discussion when we come to unfinished business, I'd be happy to do that. Um, and, uh, again, I do have updates from, uh, Ken Slater also to share on this at that time. So.
Jeff, I'd recommend we simply accept the correspondence and move on.
Yep, absolutely. Okay. Uh, moving on to unfinished business, uh, update on Lake District Regulations Survey. And I'm going to go to Michael.
Okay. Um, so we talked last.
You, you were, uh, you skipped over 5C.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. I'm sorry, Dick. Affordable housing resolution discussion. I'm, I did need to go by that. Okay. So, um, I believe this one was included in the packet of information that was sent out. Um, it's a, uh, resolution that, uh, Dick shared with us, um, in support of home rule and municipal zoning decision making approved by the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission. Do I need to read this aloud? Or has everyone received a copy and familiar with it for discussion?
If it's easier, I can also share the, share it on the screen. So you don't have to.
Yeah. And I'd like to offer a mea culpa. I've been on a tier working with multiple planning and zoning commissions, uh, Republican town committees. And, uh, this is a, uh, template document that I had, uh, intended to modify to be, uh, applicable to the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission. But when I went through and did it and Jeff caught it before I did, I forgot to take out one of the Republican Town Committee references. The Republican Town Committee has passed this and sent it on to all the distribution that's mentioned in this document. And, uh, I have, uh, been involved in, I don't know, probably close to 40 hours worth of public hearings. Uh, I've testified onto a couple of the committees. And I've been working personally, not as planning zoning, uh, on trying to, uh, head off some of this, uh, activity. And I can talk at great length when we, if we'd like to about that.
Uh, Michael, do you want to share the, um, resolution?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, draft resolution home rule.
Yeah. And Mike, I would say, share with you, the resolution you posted is not the most current one. The one that was passed out of the planning and development subcommittee, I had section six stripped out of it. They're in the process of putting it back in again. Now it's on the legislative floor. Sarah Bronin has been very vocal. Uh, and there's been several, uh, news articles written about that. And, and I should also put up, is, it's not one bill. Uh, there's a total of 12 separate bills plus an extra one for 13. And there are various, uh, items that are within these bills. Some are duplicate, some are, uh, in addition to what's in 10, 1024. And some are in conflict with what's in 1024. The, uh, business of making sausage is what's going on now in the general assembly.
Oh, my God.
Who was that?
I don't know. Dick, what do you mean the, the process of making sausage? What do you, what do you mean by that?
Well, various lobbyists and committee members within the finance, transportation, uh, planning and, and development committees have put forth a total of, uh, 12 separate bills. I didn't send all this to Mike, but I'll simply read the bills. Uh, one is the one that everyone focuses on, which is Senate Bill 1024. There's another one, House Bill 6107, which is a zoning act and municipal compliance. Then there's House Bill.
I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate that, but I don't think you need to read us each individual bill considering we're looking at the, uh, the resolution that we're talking about.
Yeah. And, and, and basically what it's all about is that by hook and by crook, and it's like a, uh, process of whack a mole. Every time one bill comes up, another one comes up and then it's modified. And they've done enough to get most of these bills on a committee and onto the House and Senate floor. While they're on the House and Senate floor, they can be modified and changed. And that's the process that's going on now. What happened?
By the elected state legislators, you say?
Correct. And those changes are being done, quote unquote, behind closed doors. And they're going to be brought forward for various votes. What happened when we had the issue of tolls in Connecticut? There was enough ground swell, uh, upset within the voting folks to make it such though that didn't happen. What is going on within various planning and zoning commissions within the state and other people within the state is to try to get enough public outrage. In fact, there were four, uh, protest meetings. Enfield, Farmington, Avon, and a couple of other places where, where they're, they're protesting against this activity. And those are going to go on in perpetuity now. This resolution is simply to put it on the record that the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission supports home rule in terms of public, in terms of planning and zoning decisions. The most garrulous thing that is within all these bills is that they would have an as of right development. So they could say that within a mile or a mile and a half, depending which bill you look at, of whatever is considered the town center of Ashford, that a, uh, multifamily development complex could be proposed and built within Ashford without any public hearings, without any, uh, input from anyone on planning and zoning or within the town. It would totally be controlled at the state level. And that goes against, especially people talking about what they want and don't want, as our previous discussion. Anything that we consider our, our duties within planning zoning, that we have the whole home rule. So rather than citing an individual bill, this resolution simply says, we don't support the state taking over planning and zoning.
Is there anywhere in this document, this is Doug Jenny, that defines home rule? Cause you say it in the heading, but I don't see anywhere that actually explains what it is. I'm trying to understand what the content of this document that we may or may not be asked to vote upon.
Who, who was speaking?
That was Doug Jenny.
Home rule is, is Doug, is, is kind of a, uh, a colloquialism that simply says the 169 individual towns and cities each control their own destiny. They have their own school boards. They have their own planning and zoning. They have their own, uh, town government and therefore it's home rule as opposed to state rule. The document goes into the more detailed issues of what's involved in some of these, uh, initiatives that are really being supported by lobbyists. And, and frankly, a lot of the money that's supporting this is coming from people that would be doing the development of these facilities. And, and, uh, it's not about desegregating Ashford. We're not, an issue to desegregate Ashford is not an issue. It's not about an issue of affordable housing in Ashford. Although some of these, uh, bills would actually penalize Ashford if they didn't have enough affordable housing to the point where they could add a mill to our property tax. I mean, it, this whole, the whole thing, and you can't say any one thing. It's all about trying to bring control away from the town into the state. And the details of the wheres is in there, talk about the things that are more associated with those controls. You know, uh, whether the, the planning zoning commission wants to approve this or some different resolution, fine. But frankly, if, if some or all of what's being proposed were to go forward, we might as well simply say, we don't really exist anymore. Especially on the area of multifamily housing.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mr. Chair, what would you like to do with this?
Well, what I'd like to do is have a little bit more discussion and to help answer your question, Doug, just to, just to get everyone on board here regarding home rule. Um, some states have home rule as a constitutional provision. Uh, and that provides protection from local government regulatory authority. Um, and in those states, one could argue that, um, the, the law under one consideration here violates the state's constitution. However, Connecticut's constitution does not have such a provision. Home rule in Connecticut is granted by the state statute. Um, I mean, it is the state that says the towns are able to do this. That can simply be changed by the state assembly changing the statute itself. So this home rule stuff is really kind of a red herring that's out there. Um, the only reason towns can pass zoning ordinances in the first place is because, uh, of the zoning enabling act. And that provides towns and cities the power to pass land use regulations. But it places conditions and limits on the local authority. Uh, to that end, many Connecticut towns are already in violation in terms of the enabling act, which requires towns to use zoning regulations to promote housing choice. And, uh, excuse me, economic diversity in housing. So, um, the fact that, um, this is out here, uh, again, as I look at this resolution, I'm being very, very honest and candid here. I think it starts out with, uh, pretty, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Statements that, uh, I would agree with when it comes to what Connecticut towns are able to do, what Ashford is able to do, uh, as a board, a local board and making local decisions. But it kind of goes off the rails for me when it starts to say the, uh, general assembly is stripping local planning and zoning processes from the towns and cities. Um, that's just hyperbole. I mean, that really, um, I don't see anywhere in 1024 or any of the other 11 or 12 bills, it strips that control from the towns.
Jeff, have you read all of them?
Yes, I have read all of them, Dick. And also the fact is they can strip those from the towns at any time. Heck, we can get stripped of whatever we want right now from a group trying to do development by eight, uh, eight dash 30. And the appeal, the state appeal, if, if, if we were to rule against someone coming in to do a development, uh, and they went to appeal it based on eight dash 30. And we had no case that we could make for why they can't go in, they could just stomp all over us and do it anyways. There's nothing that stops that already.
There, there's a lot of.
I think anything, I think anything that's in this document needs to stick to the facts. I'm a fact driven person. That's why I'm an engineer.
I mean, the statements regarding putting in, putting in developments at or near, uh, whether it's a transit location, a train transit location or something, uh, mass transit location or near a main street. They're not talking about putting up a four story hotel. They're talking about putting up a two or four family, uh, dwelling. Uh, and that, that's really the gist of the whole thing. Um, I mean, we can go back and forth on a lot of these things, whether, uh, jobs come first or housing comes first. Uh, and I am, I have, I'm of mind that jobs come first before someone decides they want to settle somewhere. But we don't have developers beating the doors down in Ashford, um, to do such a development. Uh, Mike, was there something you wanted to share?
Yeah, a couple of thoughts. Um, one, it would be good if anybody hasn't, I included in the agenda link, the actual language to 1024 that was joint favorable by planning and development, uh, very recently. So that, that's the bill that actually made it out. Um, a couple of the things that were discussed today are not in there. So for example, as of right developments, just, you know, in, in every town center, that's, that, that was removed. Um, Ashford does not have a transit stop, so they would not fall under the developments within a certain distance to transit because you don't have one. Um, so there are certain things that were on the table during the hearings and during the Anwar bill, which became the desegregate bill, which became six, 11, 1024 that are not what's being considered for, for, uh, the current joint favorable version. So I would say, if you haven't read what's actually been decided on, it would be, it would be, that would be a good place to start. Um, and I can, I can send it to you separately. If you, if you didn't have a chance to look at it through the agenda, but I just wanted to make sure, certain that people knew that Ashford doesn't fall into the transit stop. It doesn't, it's not, um, like a bus stop or anything like that. It's bus rapid transit. The fast track busway, you know, the, the rail stops along the shoreline. Those are those, those really fixed transit locations that they're, they're getting at.
Yeah, but Mike, Ashford does, does fall into the center of the, of town. So you have to figure out where is the center of the town? And let's, for argument's sake, say it's Warrenville. It would say any, uh, area within a mile and a half of the center of Warrenville would fall under this.
I believe that was taken out.
Part of it was taken out and all of it was not. And that's why I'm talking about this being a sausage maker. A lot of what was taken out was to get it past the committee. It's now going forth and be re-massaging, taking these 12, 13 bills and coming up with what might be one or multiple bills in the general assembly. You can't possibly put forth a, as Doug would try to say, a fact based analysis of legislation that has not been totally put forth. I'm open to any comments of changing on what was written. I'm open to any comments of changing on what was written on this. This has gone forth, and I think this resolution in one form or another has probably been submitted somewhere between 100, 125 times. And I use it as a template because it was convenient. But if we want to change it in any way, I'm for that. If the commission doesn't want to do anything about it, I'm okay with that. Because there's a lot of folks that are doing it. And I, as an individual, not wanting the state to take over doing things that could be done on a local level, I'm doing my best personally to oppose this. I've been on numerous Zoom conference calls with Senator Tony Wang, who is leading the effort a lot against this. There's much more detail of this than we could possibly put forth with words to this commission. And, you know, it's up to the commission what you want to do. You know, this is not voting or not voting on one specific bill. This is voting on a concept that's trying to be put forward.
I would just, does anyone have any comment?
Yeah. It's Janet. Well, I have a, I oppose the opening statement of this saying that towns and cities successfully used local zoning. There were, as Jeff said, you can be sued, there were 159 suits last year to zoning, on zoning decisions. And as it was pointed out in one of the hearings, in some towns, you can build a 50,000 square foot house without a special permit, but you want to build a two-family house and you have to go through special permitting. So I think overall, the desegregate Connecticut has some really excellent ideas to make us more uniform as a state and to bring more affordable housing to us. Make it easier for people to build it. And for each town, just because the zoning changes doesn't mean somebody's going to come in and build it. You need demand to build things. So I don't see that this is going to make a huge change in our town.
Janet, one of the things that is invited in some of these bills is to come up with a calculation of what percentage of the housing within a given town must qualify as affordable. And that requires there be an additional building within the town. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, but one of the scenarios that was looked through with a calculator that is online indicates that Ashford would have to increase their housing stock by 25% to meet this criteria of affordable housing. If Ashford does not meet the criteria for affordable housing, there are financial consequences to the town in terms of increased property taxes levied against the town. If the land use regulations of the town are not deemed to be compliant with some of the provisions within these bills, it has the provision to take and make no one void, all of the land use regulations within the town. So this, you can argue that the intent of desegregating Connecticut and some of these other ones are fine and good. But what's behind all of that is an attempt to try to take away what would be the ability of a commission such as ours to look at, hold a public hearing, special permit on anything that would be built. And frankly, if someone wanted to build a four-story apartment complex in a vacant parcel near, in Warrenville, this legislation could permit that to go forward without any public hearings whatsoever.
You can't play both sides on this, Dick. I mean, we both know that no one's going to come in and put in a four-story in Ashford to try and make money, because that's the reason they're doing this, to make money, not provide affordable housing out of the goodness of their heart. And then say that they don't come into here because there are no jobs or anything like this. You know, it's, no one's going to come in and do that.
Well, Jeff, the.
And for that matter, when you said a 25% increase, that means we'd have to go up approximately six units. Out of, what do we have, 62, Mike, in town, 62 affordable housing locations?
I think so, if memory serves me.
I thought it was that.
No, no, the number I said is the total number of housing units within the town. We'd have to increase that by hundreds. And Jeff, the.
Hundreds?
Yes. And how do you make, you can't make that happen because we're not going to develop those on our own. So if the town doesn't do that.
Where do you get hundreds from? Again, with the hyperbole, where do you get hundreds from?
I didn't have, Mike set out what he set out. I can send the commission all sorts of documents, which I have, to talk about each of these bills and what's within them. The only point I'm saying that is a general sense is there's an attempt on the state level to take away from the power of local and give it to the state. And it's done in the name of, in one sense, the segregate Connecticut. So segregation is an issue, affordable housing is an issue. But the solution is not taking the way, the ability of a local planning and zoning commission to regulate what goes on in the town. Now, if this commission wants to support this, it's fine, it's great. If this commission doesn't want to support this, that's fine with me too. Because frankly, there's a grassroots effort to try to defeat this. Whether Ashford decides to come on board or not, it's probably not going to make a lot of difference. Ashford's decision is not going to make this happen or not happen. I put it forth so it would be something that this commission could put, could decide whether it makes sense or not in terms of our overall efforts. There is carrots and sticks in all these different bills. And these bills are not set in concrete yet. They're still going through the legislative process since they're all out of committee. And what may or may not happen is going to be dependent upon how vocal the citizens of Connecticut are as far as opposing this.
I've got, I've just got three quick comments to make. One is a reminder to all the members of the commissions that when we talk about affordable housing, and as we identify affordable housing, what we're talking about is not only a, an income level below the identified level of affordable housing for folks. We're talking about the geriatric community wanting to stay in the town they grew up in and can't afford that home. Someone just out of college or just out of school wanting to stay in the town, and they can't afford, they can't live home with their parents, and they can't afford to stay in Ashford also. That's one. I did speak with Ken Slater briefly on this too, and asked what type of guidance they're offering up. And it might seem a little, I don't want to say weak, but it did make sense to me after I talked it out with him. But the fact that it's out of committee and it's in with the legislatures now is, it's a wait and see. Wait to see what they come up with, as opposed to making a full-blown statement from the town for something, again, that's not in committee anymore, and it's not taking testimony. And I mean, this might go to someone, but whoever it's sent to, I don't think is going to make a hell of beans at this point. The other is that unless this were to be a unanimous resolution, again, not worth the paper it's written on in my book.
This resolution was put forth when everything was in committee. And since we didn't take it up a meeting or two ago, it is written to go to committees. I do have a distribution that includes every member of the Senate and House of Representatives that it could go to, and it could change to that. But, you know, if this commission does not want to pursue this, frankly, I'll withdraw it, and it's not going to make a difference because there is a grassroots swell to try to undo this thing. So, fine with me. I simply wanted this commission to have an opportunity to see what's taking place at the state level. And Jeff, this is not against senior housing or housing for, matter of fact, one of the things that.
I didn't say it was, Dick. I was just reminding the members that when we talk of affordable housing, that it's much larger than, to use a bad term, that's switched to affordable housing. It's not just low income. And also statements that have been made during a lot of the testimony too. It's not just groups, people of color and diversity and things like that. I mean, it encompasses a much wider range than that. And I do agree with you on the effect of where it really needs to be held is like in your Fairfields, your West Hartford's and things like this. Their feet need to be held to a greater fire. One of the things is, and again, this goes back to the first statement and what Janet brought up, is that 8-30 has been on the books since 1989. And less than, and what is it? 100, what are we at, 131 towns have not met the 10% affordable housing goal of that bill in 30 years? That's why there's carrots and sticks on this. Same thing, there's why there's carrots and sticks on the P O C D. You don't get the P O C D done, you lose out on grants and things like that. So, I mean, it's nothing new to have the state want to move forward on something that, given, left to their own devices, many of the towns, not all, many of the towns have not moved forward with this. I mean, look at us, we're scrambling now for the last year of 1030, 10, excuse me, 8-30. We've had five years to do it, and we didn't move on it to do our plan of affordable housing until this last year.
And Jeff, I would separate things apart. I fully support us going forward with a plan for affordable housing. As a matter of fact, one of the first things that occurred to me when I read through all of this is to go through and make some changes in the IRA zone that we had for the quote-unquote in-law apartments. We had those.
Which is all part of what we're going to be working with Mike and his group on over the next 12, 13 months.
Yeah. And that was, that was an obvious thing that we should change. And we should also look at, we don't have anything beyond a duplex within our regulations right now. We should look to expand that to those, that's for sure. The biggest issue on this is that you don't centralize the control of planning and zoning at the state level to accomplish that. You can accomplish that at the local level. And that's really what this is about. It's the centralization of control. That is something that would, once the floodgate opens, it would open up many other things. So I don't think any of us within this commission wants to quote-unquote segregate Ashford, wants to make it difficult for a college student to find a place to live in Ashford if they so choose, to make it difficult for a senior to find a place to live in Ashford. We should be doing that. But we really do not need Hartford to tell us how to do that. That's really the whole issue of why I've been so vocal on this. But whether Ashford decides to go forward in this or not, frankly, it's one drop in a very large bucket where other people are moving forward aggressively.
So, I really hesitate to move forward with any type of motion on this because the document is incomplete in its nature and obviously needs some changes to it. Any more comment from anyone regarding the resolution?
I would propose that, in light of the conversation here, in the light of the impact, I will withdraw the document for consideration.
Thank you, Dick. Okay. I would ask that the members of the commission try and stay abreast of what's going on outside of the commission. There's a lot, as Dick and I can tell you, there's lots and lots of information out there that you can join a number of different groups to look the information up and get on board with what's going on. And from time to time, Mike's able to actually provide us with some good information and updates too. So, again, it's a hotbed, as many people have already mentioned, with this in the state. And we'll continue to do so, but it was a, again, our lawyer said, wait and see, to see what develops and what comes out. So we'll continue to do that.
Could I just make one comment?
Absolutely.
About, I'm not a member, but I think.
Oh, Valerie, I'm sorry, I thought it was Catherine. Yeah. Yes, Valerie?
I just wanted to say that when you talk about Hartford doing this, it's not the city of Hartford that is proposing these new laws and so forth. It's the Connecticut government of our state. So I don't think we should keep calling it Hartford's going to do this to us, and Hartford's going to control.
I think in the statement of Hartford, it's in reference to that's where the legislature meets.
I know, but.
So however we're capturing that in the minutes, we will appropriately identify that.
The issue here is literally to create a new body within the government of Hartford, government of the state, to actually oversee legislation that would be passed to govern zoning at a state level rather than a local level.
You've got to show me that, Dick. You've really got to show me where it says that. Because I've talked with NECOG, I've talked with a lot of different groups, and no one can show me where it says that we are going to take over the zoning.
Jeff, I'm sure you've talked to a lot of folks, but if you look at what's being proposed, if they're going to have the decisions made at the state level, someone's got to administer that. And I have sat through numerous Zoom calls, both within bipartisan groups and partisan groups, talking about what the next steps of this would be. And it would literally result in a administrative function. I mean, if you pass all these legislations that says Hartford State will do this, they'll do that, someone's got to administer that. So how do you do it if you don't have an organization that administers that? And that's what is being proposed. There's also a proposal of how to define whether a town or a city is meeting the Affordable Housing Act and what, and how to define what that means. The devil is in the detail of this, which is not fully fleshed out, as our attorney has said. But by the time it's fleshed out, then it's really too late, because then it will be voted upon. The time to oppose it is to oppose the simple premise that planning and zoning be administered at a state level versus a town level. That's the simplest way to say this. And there's an awful lot of people across the state, most in, some in the cities like Fairfield and New Canaan and such. And frankly, it was the planning and zoning of New Canaan where this template came from. And initially was adopted by, you know, CT 169 Strong, that simply says, we don't want the state to take over planning and zoning. So whether it happens or not, I don't know. I would have used the analogy to the tolling. We didn't have tolling in this state because there was a groundswell movement to try to vote it down. Or the public was against it, so everyone withdrew from it. This is the same kind of thing right now. But I don't think, I don't think.
The Hartford Current had a news story about that today, today's news. And I'm going to go back and reread that story again. It's about this topic, I think it was a front page story on the zoning issue that we're talking about right now.
Well, again, there have been a number of articles on this. And yeah, that is a source, along with, you know, whatever's online for the different groups and things like that. But the Current has had a number of different articles on this.
And also, the CT Mirror and Connecticut News Junkie. There's all sorts of stories on that. The one that was in CT Mirror that came out within the past two or three days was Sarah Bronin, who's been leading the charge on this. She's Luke Bronin's wife. And she's also the head of the desegregate CT. She was on record as stating, okay, we got this thing through past, now we got to start adding back all the things we took out, so we re-put it in. She wants to put in the section six that was taken out. She's lobbying to make that happen. So this is, it's a moving target. It's not whether you want to vote on a certain specific legislation or not. It's whether you want to have support for. It's whether you know, you want to have support for a, a concept or not. So, as I said, I don't think whether Ashford planning and zoning does anything about this is going to make any difference. I'd say if any of you feel as I do, you know, make your thoughts known. If, if you don't care, fine.
Okay. Any other input? Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for the, uh, input from all those involved. Moving on to, uh, what I had originally introduced, uh, unfinished business, uh, a update on Lake District regions. Now, Michael, you can talk.
Okay. Um, so I guess it was at the last meeting maybe before, and we've been working on all this stuff, the Lake Districts. And, um, so we posted in, on the website. I sent it out to the Lake District folks and we had a, uh, an advertisement article, letter, whatever you want to refer to it in the, um, the Ashford Citizen, which went to everybody, uh, about a week ago. Um, basically advertising the survey, what the commission's looking to do, where we are in the process and asking folks to take, um, take the survey. So, uh, the survey's still live. It'll be live for maybe another two weeks. Um, we've got forty-five responses so far.
Fantastic.
Yeah, and nobody called to complain they couldn't figure it out, which I take as a personal pat on the back for figuring it out. But, I mean, I can go through some of them if you want. Um, I didn't download it because I want to just wait for the final, but sixty-two percent of the folks that are from Ash, uh, are from Lake Chaffey, about thirty-eight percent are from Ashford Lake. Eighty-three percent are, are, um, full-time residents. Um, fifty-five percent feel that the current zoning regulations are too restrictive. And forty percent of those have taken it so far, um, think that the regulations currently written are appropriate. Five percent so far think that the regulations should be more restrictive. We asked about, um, the layout debt and density of the areas. And, um, forty-two percent think that the layout is appropriate as far as the, the, the sort of the density of the, their specific neighborhoods. Thirty percent think that there should be, um, minor increases allowing for expansion of existing homes. And twenty-seven percent think that it is already too densely developed. Um, and I'll pick out some of the more notable ones rather than go through line by line. Forty-five percent think that, um, there should be basically an evaluation of reducing the setbacks and allowing for, um, height to be expanded. And twenty-five percent think that no expansion should be allowed whatsoever. Forty percent think that only partial increases to height should be allowed. Fifty percent think that the P Z C should focus on water quality, but that it should not be a barrier to property improvement. Um, and forty-three percent think that the P Z C should prioritize water quality over development. Forty-four percent think that the water quality is currently good. Uh, thirty percent think it's fair but declining. Um, and then we have, um, a number of responses where people could basically tell us what they think is the most important issue facing, um, their specific lake area and they were able to type their answers. Um, and so other than some property preservation and maintenance stuff, there's some water quality things, um, and failing septic systems, um, are, are some other things that come up. So, once this closes, I'll pull out and extract all those responses and I'll send them to you so you can look through them. But it's, I checked it yesterday and, uh, last week and they're still coming in. So it's open at this point.
Okay. Now that's, uh, I'm, I, I'm very, uh, buoyed up by the, uh, responses, uh, out of that. Um, Janet, did you, uh, have any opportunity with your Lake Association having a discussion on this? Or did they have any? I don't think you made the meeting. I thought you said.
They didn't make the meeting and I, I'm sorry, I didn't follow up with what their discussion was. But the, um, the board had already discussed it and sent in their joint, um, survey, uh, originally.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Jeff, one of the real issues on this, uh, is when I went back and I looked at, uh, primarily Lake Chaffey, uh, I, I looked at probably twenty-five, thirty properties. And I looked at the permits that were issued and the number that actually came in front of planning and zoning as exceptions. We seem to have approved additions to properties, uh, garages built, sheds built, uh, driveways put in, which increase the impervious zones willy-nilly without any, uh, any, anything going to the Eastern Highlands Health District, anything going to the planning and zoning. And frankly, I think that, that, uh, is an oversight that needs to be corrected. For instance, if, if you put a second story on a, on a house that adds two more bedrooms, that has to go to the, the health district because that increases the load on the septic system. And that should be, you know, reviewed and approved by the Eastern Highlands Health District before any of those additions go on. And frankly, a large percentage of the properties within the lakes are not going to be able to support additional loads on the septic system. The danger to the town is that if this were to be unchecked, we would be on the hook by the state D E P for putting in septic systems in one or both lakes. And that would be a very large expenditure that would have to be borne by the town. So that I think is the big, uh, elephant in the room, you know, for, for the town on these.
Just to be clear, Dick, on the twenty-five to thirty properties that you were discussing, that you had looked at and the exceptions had been granted, you're saying that planning and zoning did them or building, uh, building inspection allowed?
Mike Gardner specifically. Okay. They came in, they made the application, it never came to plan and zoning. Uh, and I mean, how you put an addition onto a house without it going to the health district surprises me like the Dickens. And as you, the, the impervious zone is important too, because that affects the runoff that goes from a property into the lake. And none of that was, uh, looked upon in, in the granting of these permits. I didn't find any evidence and I, I don't claim to have done a hundred percent of those because, you know, I, I spent probably three or four hours going through these. And if you go to, you know, the, uh, land use, uh, records, you can pull up all the permits that were issued and see whether it was anything that was done on them. That I think has to be a major thing that we think about as we change the land use regulations for the lakes is that we protect the water. I think a lot of the residents are very, uh, tuned into that as indicated with what Mike saw with the survey. But I think it's in the town's interest to make sure that we protect that so we don't run afoul of deep.
Uh, so one thing that I wanted to mention, because I, and I know that we're kind of, we're talking about changing the regs before we're done with the survey. But, um, I did talk with Lynette, um, and they have, I don't remember which, which lake, but one of the lakes has a higher rate of septic failure than the other because most of the properties were built on what are, would now be considered filled wetlands. So the, the septic fail, um, and so they, they tend to see more septic repair replacements on one of the lakes than the other. Um, the other thing is that I worked with the assessor and, um, she gets all the credit. But we came up with a, average house sizes for the two lakes, because one of the things we're talking about is coverage. Um, and so just, just so that you can kind of think about it, the average house size for Ashford Lake is twelve hundred square feet. The average house size for Lake Chaffey is about a thousand square feet. And then there's some median house sizes, which are about two hundred square feet less than that. So when you start looking at the percent increase and how we start dealing with coverage, um, those are the, the average sizes. But I know there's a map in the land use office. I don't know who did it. I don't know how accurate or updated it is, but it actually lists the properties along one of the two lakes that have had septic fail. Um, and it sort of was tracking that. So when we start thinking about water quality, if we've got two different lakes that were constructed on different soils and have different, you know, things going on, we may have to keep that in mind. But to Dick's previous point, any, I, I confirmed with Lynette, any expansion to a home that's living space is going to have to show that they meet the current requirements for septic, that they are not within proximity to a well, that they're not within proximity to a neighbor's well. They're going to have to show that they can have a reserved septic area unless they can provide some engineered septic, you know, under the driveway or something. So those are all non-negotiable. Um, and if you plotted those out, really limit the overall expansion of these properties anyways. Um, so, so setbacks are not that big of a deal when you have a seventy-five foot separating distance to a well and to your neighbor's well, when your lot's only sixty feet wide. Um, so those really come into play, you know, as well when they're trying to do stuff out there.
And Mike, uh, I think you'll find that the big, biggest issue of septic fails is, is around Lake Chaffey. And if, if you simply drive, uh, when you go home at night, go via eighty-nine, drive up eighty, you know, eighty-nine to exit seventy-two, and you'll see several homes that have been built on the water there. There's one that's a fairly large one that was built on a footprint that, uh, I asked why it was approved, but it was approved without a special permit where they took the footprint of sheds in the lake and they built that, uh, two and a half story, uh, facility. And I don't know how much it added to the bedrooms and the, uh, issue there. There's no room for a septic system on that property. I mean, the, the house takes up, uh, fifty, sixty percent of, of, of the lot.
Well, I can, something that I can sort of, I mean, I, I don't know this, that they're, and I haven't looked at the file and I know you kind of indicated that you may have, or you talked to Michael Gardner. There's absolutely no way that that house was built without, without health review. So what may have happened and, and my family has a house on a lake in another state. But you can have a small house with a little tiny couple of bedrooms and then you can build a big house with the same number of bedrooms, they're just a lot bigger. So, you know, you can put five bedrooms in a thousand square feet if they're small and you can add two floors, but still have five bedrooms. So, uh, in many cases, under the health code, i- i- if it qualifies as a bedroom, even if it's triple the size of the original house, there's nothing they can do there because the increase is moot. And, and so that may be what you're seeing as far as a, as a expansion. I mean, I, I could look at it, but we're, I guess, probably ahead of ourselves since the survey is still open.
Yeah, I would say, A, let's get the survey in, uh, B, we have to make sure with whatever we do downstream, that we take into account the water quality and the impact on, on the water in both lakes.
Okay. All right. Anyone, uh, uh, any other discussion or Mike, did you have anything else on that?
No, I'll, I'll just, uh, by the time we meet next, the survey will then be closed. So I'll pull all those things out and I'll try to get it summarized for the, when the agenda goes out so people can look at them.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll hit the high points on that. Thank you. Uh, any discussion from anyone else on that? Okay. Uh, moving on to unfinished business, I think it'll be redundant for us to have further discussion regarding affordable housing unless something has sunk in or someone like has been pondering something that was said earlier.
Jeff, I, I would add that we go forward and get our plan done as quickly as possible.
Yes, yes, absolutely. How, however, we are contracting for the new fiscal year. So it would be July one before we can, uh, officially put things together. But we can start actually in May and June, looking at, uh, some, uh, activities. Send me some things we can start focusing on so that, uh, we can hit the ground running for July one is what I'd want to try and do. And that would be a matter of the commission working on items and then working with Michael and his group on July one.
Are we, uh, counting on NECOG for input?
Uh, I did reach out to, uh, John Filczek and actually there was, uh, I did speak with the lawyer that was offering up pro bono work. Um, however, his plate was full at the time, but he said come June, July, I expressed how we had a, uh, a contract. We were working with our, uh, zoning enforcement group, um, that, uh, uh, he said to give him a call back then, things might open up a little bit and he'd be happy, uh, gratis to review anything that we have either put together or started to put together, plus helping us to focus on areas he's seen in other towns. And again, that, that came through NECOG.
That's, that's good. I, I, one of the things I, I believe, uh, Mike, you can correct me on this. This somehow has to pass through and be approved by NECOG before it's all done?
No.
No?
The statute eight dash thirty J just says that a town must, um, prepare and adopt. It, it doesn't even specify who. Most places are, are sending it through their legislative body, but there's no regional component.
Good.
And again, for that matter, the fact that, uh, um, uh, I was just thinking of something else. Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, yeah. The fact that, uh, Ashford is, uh, excuse me, planning and zoning is taking that on, uh, kind of heading this. Uh, I have reached out to, uh, the Housing Authority and Dennis Boitres and his group, Jessica there, uh, along with the Selectman's Office and, um, uh, also the, I'm trying to think what else I reached out to, briefly reached out to, um, uh, Board of Finance to give their input and Cheryl Baker, the treasurer also, uh, to see what type of, uh, potential, um, finance, uh, issues might be out there. Should we, uh, run across anything as we go through the plan, uh, affordable housing? So, uh, that being said, I'm coming to, I'm going to take it. That's all the discussion. We're going to go on that. Uh, going on to the update on one fifty-four Westford Hill Road. Uh, I will touch upon a few of the items here that, uh, Mr. Griffith expressed. I will also, uh, draft a response to him regarding his email, uh, and having read his, uh, emails at the meeting. Uh, and speaking with Ken Slater, yes, uh, Mr. Griffiths is correct that the, uh, judge did grant Mr. Love a one-year extension. He added on a year to all of the dates that we had expressed previously, uh, which would have been ending this coming September. So now it's, uh, July, September, and again, of two thousand twenty-two, July is the date for final, uh, processing and such. And, um, a plan needs to be given to us by June thirtieth of the, uh, remediation and be done with a remediation by September of, uh, two thousand twenty-two.
Uh, Jeff, that, that extension was granted by the judge based upon Ken Slater's, uh, input of what we wanted done and not done?
Correct. Yes. I mean, he did, he did represent us. He did put it out there that, uh, the issues that were going on. Um, and our intent to, uh, wish to hold to it. However, the judge, uh, enlists, uh, hearing, uh, Attorney Penny, uh, Mr. Love's attorney discussed the issues with, it, it's like a get out of jail free card. The COVID nineteen issues, whether it affects you directly or not. Um, and directed the, the use, the value, the ability to move this, uh, material. Uh, it's, it's kind of a blank check right now.
So, so the, from a judicial viewpoint, we've got no recourse.
We, we, we've got no recourse to appeal or to move forward on this. It, it didn't make sense according to Ken to, uh, put any more fight into this. Um, as again, uh, people just give, uh, a lot of leeway when it comes to the issues involving COVID and its pandemic effect. Um, I did, uh, put together the numbers, uh, we, uh, from the most recent input that we got back in December from, uh, the Knight Corporation, Knight Construction and Mr. Love. It was an additional twelve hundred and forty-eight, uh, yards of material for two thousand twenty, the entire year of two thousand twenty. That brings him up to approximately somewhere in the range of about five thousand, fifty-two hundred cubic yards. I think it's a moot point at this issue. We were hoping to hang our hat on that a little bit if they had come to the eighty-five hundred, that it was the original estimate. Um, but now that he's been given another year to try and move this, it won't matter whether he hits the next thirty-five hundred or he only moves a thousand. I mean, it's, it's a timeframe now as opposed to, uh, eighty-five hundred yards being a limiting factor.
Have we got an agreement from Knight to keep us informed of the Bill of Latens?
That was part of the stipulation, I believe. I'm trying to remember if I don't have it in front of me. I can't remember if it was every three months or every six months we're supposed to be getting. A a I think it's every six months, so come June, we should be getting a update as to what's been moved out of there. Also, that twelve forty eight also had another five hundred yards of stocked process material that was being stored to be moved off of the property. So it was processed and done as we had kind of asked them to try and do continue to process and keep stockpiling it. It's just they have limited resource and limited room there as Dick, you and Alex and I saw at the end of December when we went over there.
It didn't look like they were making a real big effort to do stuff.
Well, I can tell you that I saw Knights working whole hog down the road here, working on my neighbor's demolition and refoundation of his barn. So I'm sure he's got better business to work on than that. And again, you know, I don't know what the flow is. I don't know what their commitment is right now on moving it, but there's there's obviously a court extension on that.
As we go forward with this with the neighbors. And I understand the frustrations of the Griffins. I expect a phone call from them every month or so. And I'm sure many of others on the commission have got calls from them. I think it would behoove us to put together an email slash mail to them indicating what we have been doing and what's happened with the the courts. So at least we're showing good faith in trying to resolve this.
I can I can.
Excuse me, it does look like people that live next door, the house is empty. It looks like they may have moved.
Oh, really?
Is it the Griffins?
The big white house that's next to them, the people that came and spoke with us several times. The house looks empty.
Well, the Griffins don't have their house is a driveway or two up and sets back away from the road up on the hill. Thus overlooking and being in very short distance from the property line itself of six hundred feet. They're not down near the driveway area. So it must it must be another a different neighbor in that. Double style. But to to your point, Dick, yeah, so we can include, you know, what our efforts have been, what we've been doing. Also, I in my email back to Mr. Griffiths back in December, I did ask him or did communicate to him to please continue to indicate to us any violations he might he might suspect or experience and in order to best expedite these responses for alleged violations, please contact Ashford CEO Michael Demato. Michael, you haven't gotten anything official from Griffiths, have you?
Nope.
All right, so the other thing is regarding a a request for a noise study to be performed. If I remember right, we went through this back in nineteen, two thousand nineteen. The fact that they are six hundred feet away is appropriate to the both the exemption and even if it were a special permit. The distance is correct. As for a noise study, we can probably ask to a blue in the face with DEP and I don't know if we're going to get anybody out here, especially as even though we are semi post pandemic. The difficulty before the pandemic was there and I don't know if we can do it now. We can put into the selectmen to potentially put out a request of that to see what happens.
Jeff, the noise regulations and requirements are regulated on a state level.
Right.
Yeah, and Ashford can't impose anything other than what the state does. So you'd have to look at what the state, the states on this. Frankly, I don't think it would be a violation of the state sound level issues. So I mean, you can ask them to do it, but I don't think it's going to come of anything.
Yeah, and I don't think they'll get I don't think they're going to get out there frequently enough to, I mean, catch as catch can. It could, there could be times where it where it goes over. But just the sheer kind of preliminary readings that I took way back when. It was on the fringe and barely noticeable. That's when I was near the end of the driveway for them as opposed to up at the hill. And again, I was not using anything scientific that DEP uses. It was a simple sound meter that I had, so.
I I think to protect the commission, I think we should make a formal request and then let it lay there.
Absolutely, absolutely. And then we hear back from DEP and what their response is.
And we had gone through this sound thing when the wind turbines were proposed for exit seventy two. And that was like a conundrum. You asked for something, you couldn't get something, since it wasn't built, you couldn't talk about it. I mean, it it was was something that literally went nowhere.
Right, so. So that is the update. Any other questions or discussion on Westford Hill Road? One fifty four Westford Hill Road. Okay, we have no new business listed. I'll then go to the zoning officer report, Michael.
We have had a number of complaints come in recently. Actually, things are crazy in the office, so we're working through those. The item that I brought before you a month or two ago about executive session in executive session has been rectified and resolved, so there will be no further action needed there that, which is a good thing. So we're we're, you know, the office is getting busier and I'm and I'm in the final stages of getting our administrative zoning permit online, so it will be part of the online permit system, just like when you do a building permit. So I'm working to just finalize that so that folks can do that all in one place. So we're busy.
Mike, this is more maybe a built in official thing, but the property in Westwood Hill Road. It was an old house that the guy that owned the package store in Lake Chaffey, who died recently. And that house was was purchased. They didn't build a new house, but it looks like they built a new house around the old house. Did that go through any special permission at all?
Ah, I could tell you if you gave me the address.
It's on Waterfall Road. It's the it's the only property being done. And literally, it's a pretty extensive, the they bought the property and they've remodeled it such you wouldn't even know that old house was still there.
So if it was a renovation without a footprint expansion, then I wouldn't have seen it. What I will, what I will say is that all of the anybody, you don't need an account, you can go on the town's website, you can search all the open and active building permits. Put in the address and it'll tell you what the permit's for, who it was for, what what they're doing, what's the status. So you can look there or you can you can send me an email. I I don't have that list in front of me.
Anything else, Michael?
Nothing else on my end.
Okay. And that leads us to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Amen, Dick Williams.
And Nord. Yep, all in favor?
Hi.
You said no, I'm going to beat you now. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Thank you for your attention. Thank you for the input and stay safe, be well and see you on the other side.
Thank you.